Good morning and welcome to the Village of East Hampton zoning board appeals meeting for Friday, July 11th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. McMullen is absent. Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Carmelli?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes. We have a minutes from June 13th, 2025. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have six determinations today, and I will read the first two, and then Mr. Rose will read the second, uh, the next four. And you can, the tire files are available at Village Hall. In the application of Sky is the Limit LLC, 152 Montauk Highway, Suffolk County Tax Map number 301-7-2-10, to legalize coverage and to modify prior zoning board of appeals determination is granted with conditions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Gabby, can you please poll the board?
Mr. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
Mr. Carmelli?
Yes.
In the application of 201 CHR Holding LLC, 201 Cove Hollow Road, Suffolk County Tax Map number 301-7-6-7, to reconstruct to alterations a pre-existing non-conforming detached garage is granted with conditions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Gabby, can you poll the board?
Mr. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Barris?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
Mr. Rose, your honor.
In the application of Woods Lane Holdings LLC, 12 Woods Lane, SCTM number 301-8-7-54, to construct cellar egress within the required side yard setbacks, motions and proposals to grant the application, any motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, please poll the board.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
In the application of Christopher and Rosemary Dormant, 11 Barnes Lane, SCTM number 301-4-2-9, to construct in addition to a single, single-family residence, construct swimming pool, construct decking, is granted, motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Please poll the board.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
And the application of Jack and Ruth M. McSpadden, 138 Main Street, SCTM number 301-9-1-19.5, to construct in addition to existing residence, is granted, any motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second, please poll the board.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
Final determination is in the application of John and Lauren Goodfroy, 12 Pondview Lane, SCTM number 301-9-1-9.21, to construct a playroom and an attached garage is granted with conditions. Any motion?
So moved.
Second?
Please poll the board.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Ms. Fitzsimons?
Yes.
Mr. Darko?
Yes.
Okay, we have the extension of time request for Tram House 1 LLC, Tram House 2 LLC, Village of East Hampton, 6975 and 79 West End Road. So do I need to poll the board, or we just gonna, Lisa?
You can poll the board.
Okay. So, I have a motion?
Motion to extend the time.
Okay, second, please?
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have two adjournments today, 26 West End Road LLC, 26 West End Road, and we have 64 West End Acquisitions LLC, 64 West End Road, and now we have the continued hearings, one continued hearing today, and Mr. Rose is gonna chair that.
Okay. Is it continued hearing for 74 Mill Hill Lane?
I'm just gonna read who's sitting. Mr. Rose, Mr. Barris, Ms. Fitz, Ms. Fitzsimons, and Mr. Darko.
Hi, John Tarbit for the applicant Brian Stannis, who is here. Originally came before the board, I guess, three months ago, looking for a gross floor area variance. The property is currently improved with a dilapidated house. We want to redevelop the property, the new home. A lot of the existing non-conformities would be removed or made better. The, the request is for a 190 square foot gross floor area variance off the back of the house. Three months ago, it was a, a bigger variance, and the board asked us to come back and work on making it smaller. We were able to get it down to 10% from 17%. 10% is a little misleading, because it's such a small lot, that 190 square feet quickly becomes 10%. Before submitting the application, we reached out to all the neighbors, one of whom is a historic preservation consultant as a job. He wrote a letter in support, as well as all the other neighbors, who are unanimous in their, in their requests of board to approve this application. They all think that the new house would be in addition to the neighborhood. So, that, that, the last time we were here, which was last month, we had recently submitted new information, and the board asked us to come back this month, so you have a chance to look at the new information.
Any further questions? Do you have a question for, anybody from the public would like to testify? Do you have a?
Thank you.
Have a question for Town Village Planner?
Hey, Jack, regarding, one of the points that was made in the submissions was in regard to precedence for other variances being granted. Now, the issue that has come up, or that has raised concern is, is the issuing of a variance of this percentage on a small lot, and what the precedent is. You submitted in your materials precedence on Mill Hill Lane for variances, but did not, but there were questions in terms of first lot this size. Obviously, those lots had different sizes, and there was one that asked the village planner in terms of our presidential action, but if you want to speak to that point?
Yeah, Billy may want to speak as well, but I'll start. Yeah, so we submitted a number of, you know, Mill Hill Lane's obviously been developed for a long time, probably before the zoning board was in existence. So almost all the homes are pre-existing non-conforming and/or have benefited from variances to, for some non, one non-conformity or another. Especially when you're dealing with a lot like this, which is 8,000 square feet, the minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet in the village, so this is, these lots, they, they pretty much don't exist without either a pre-existing non-conformity or some sort of variance. When you redevelop a lot, that adds all sorts of design criteria, criteria to try to, it's almost impossible, right, to rebuild a home. That's not impossible, you could build, you could build some very small home, but with the value of these lots and people wanting to live in a house, I mean, we're talking about a 2,000 square foot house here, so it's not a large home. So, we submitted a list of maybe seven or eight homes in the street that have received gross floor area variances. Some were in larger lots, but, so, some had four, 800 square, 400 square foot variances, 700 square foot variances, 800 square foot variances. The average home size was 3,000 probably square feet. So what, what we were doing was showing the board that other properties on the street have received gross floor area variances, that the other homes are, because gross floor area law-
Your software license has expired. To avoid periodic audio interruptions, please renew your license.
Uh, I feel like this kicked off too, notes back. So, other homes on the street had, you know, the gross floor area variances are intended to reduce bulk. We thought we did a really good job in this application of having a varied roofline and not a boxy house. In addition, the request is for a one-story addition off the back of the house, not visible from the street. But the point of the, the submission of other examples was to show that other properties on the street have received gross floor area variance, variances, gross floor area variances, and that this would not be precedent-setting, as far as either, and some of those lots, while not all of them were small lots, some, at least one or two were small lots. And then we also submitted up some examples of lots not on the street that were the exact same size, that received the exact same or larger relief.
These were modifications, variances from modifications to existing homes, not new construction.
Uh, so on, on Mill Hill, I don't know if any were for new construction. Some of the ones we submitted in the village that the board has granted relief for were, were new construction. It, it would not, I think Billy would agree that there, there is precedent-
We'll let, we'll let Billy speak.
Yeah, no, I'm just gonna set it, I'm gonna tee it up for him. There-
I'm sure he appreciates that.
There is precedent in the village for granting gross floor area variances for new construction. We submitted some of those examples.
Thank you. Billy?
Sure. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Billy Hayjack for the village. I prepared a memorandum for the board, which I analyzed the examples that were provided by the applicant, which were gross floor area variances granted in this vicinity area, or, you know, all, all were on Mill Hill Lane. And as John indicated, they, they all vary in size, the lots vary in size, the magnitude of the variances varied from 1% up to 14%. None of them were for new construction. The village has granted gross floor area variances for new construction, but I think if you read those decisions, there are unique circumstances that warranted the relief that the board was granting. So, you know, you should view those determinations and determine whether or not you think that this particular situation, you know, warrants this, you know, relief or similar relief, or that unique circumstances exist here to, to grant that type of relief. You know, as I indicated, the, the lots varied from 5,800 square feet up to 20,000 square feet. And in most cases, like I said, the board weighed the factors for those particular applications, and in most cases, they, they were looking at the mass and the effect that the variance would have on the neighborhood. And in those decisions, they discussed specifically how the, you know, the variance would not change the character of what the house looked like, or affect the, you know, the neighborhood. Most of them were hidden, you know, in the back, or alterations that were inseparable. In many cases, the board looked at the overall height, making sure that the height wasn't changing. So those are all the circumstances that the board considered in those conditions. I would note that it, there are, there is new construction that hasn't been granted relief. I mean, the immediate neighbor to the west re, or, yeah, to the west, reconstruct, you know, redeveloped that property and complied with the gross floor area variances, so I think he's one of the neighbors that wrote a letter of support for the project.
You think renovated inconsistent with the zone?
Uh, redeveloped it with, yes. They did obtain a, this board granted a variance for their pool equipment, but the house itself complied with the gross floor area law.
So Billy, I'm aware of some precedent where new construction got a GFA variance, and those, you know, unique factors were, you know, it was backing up to commercial property. It was being converted from two-family home to one-family home. In your memory, is there precedent, the unique circumstance being the size of the lot itself? Because I, I think that's what Mr. Tarbet is saying?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any, no. I mean, I think the size of the lot could have been a factor, the two unpleasant lane that were considered. I mean, that could have been part of the factors, that they were small lots. I, I don't recall offhand, but I don't know of any others on, like, Mill Hill or Dayton that, for, for new construction, no.
Okay.
Thank you, Billy. Any further questions? John, do you want to add anything?
So, 15 Mill Hill Lane? Well, it's one of those situations where they basically took the house down and rebuilt it, so it might not be considered new construction, but it's a, it's a brand-new home. This board granted relief for a 2,345 square foot home where 1979 was permitted, there's an 18% variance. So if you're looking for precedent on Mill Hill, that would probably be the closest example. Same-sized lot. What's there now is nothing related to what was there beforehand. Also, unique circumstances, this property has a number of non-conformities which were making better. So the existing house doesn't meet side yard setbacks, the new house is proposed to meet side yard setbacks, the garage in the back of the property, we're making, we're pulling that further away from the property lines, and making it, it's, it's currently essentially permitted as a home, the cottage, it's a cottage in the back, it has, the kitchen? No kitchen. It's just a lot, you're allowed to sleep in it. So that would become a conforming structure as well. So, there are a lot of non-conformities in this property that would be made better.
Thank you. Comments from the board before we move on? Okay, motion to close? You need a motion to close, may I?
Motion to close. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, okay. Next item is 100 Montauk Highway, East Hampton LLC, 100 Montauk Highway.
I'm just gonna read the notice. Application of 100 Montauk EH LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map number 301-7-7-2-22, for a special permit in accordance with Section 278 7D and variances in accordance with Chapter 278 zoning, are requested to raise the existing improvements and construct a two-story building, parking area, and accessory structures, and to change a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant use into an office use with two apartments. A special permit is requested in accordance with Section 278 7D 1A and variances in accordance with Section 278 2B to permit the conversion of a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant use to an office use with two residential apartments. A 5,493 square foot coverage variance is requested from Section 278 3A 9A to permit 8,713 square feet of coverage, where 3,220 square feet is the maximum permitted coverage. Existing coverage is shown to be 10,152 square feet. Variances of 13.3 feet, 12.2 feet, and 17 feet are requested from, from Section 278 3E to permit the construction of a building located 16.7 feet from the front yard lot line, 17.8 feet from the side yard lot line, and 13 feet from the rear, rear yard lot line, where the required transitional yard setbacks are 30 feet. Variances of 15.9 feet, 29.5 feet, 22.6 feet, and 12.2 feet are required from Sections 278 3A 4A and Sections 278 3E to permit the construction of brick walkways and a porch located 19.1 feet from the front yard lot line, brick walkways located .5 feet from the rear yard lot line, and a lower courtyard with roof overhang located 7.4 feet from, from a rear yard lot line, and 17.8 feet from a side yard lot line, where the required yard setback is 35 feet, and the transitional yard setbacks are 30 feet. A two-foot variance is requested from Section 278 3B 2A to permit a building with a height of 32 feet, where the maximum building height is 30 feet. A variance for two parking spaces is required from Section 278 6B 3 to permit 12 parking spaces, where 14 parking spaces are required. The property is 13,600 square feet in size, and is located at 100 Montauk Highway. The property is located in Residence District R80, and is located at 100 Montauk Highway. I'm sorry. The property is located in Residence District R80, and contains a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant use. This project requires site plan approval of the design review board, and is classified as an unlisted action in accordance with SECRA.
Okay. Thank you for water.
You did more work than I have to. So, this is John Tarbit for the applicant, Michael Derrick is here as well from Landscape Details, responsible for the design of the building. So, the board probably remembers this as either the Quiet Clam or Nichols Restaurant, and historically, the property had a relationship to the residential property next door, and a lot of times, parking was allowed in that residential property next door. More recently, it became sort of the subject of a lot of zoning violations under previous owners to now, and code enforcement actions, and it was established that you could not park cars on the residential property next door, severely limiting the amount of parking in the property. So it doesn't really work as a restaurant anymore. The village code allows a pre-existing non-conforming use such as this to essentially become more conforming without becoming actually conforming, which would be residential. So if you can go from an intense non-conforming use to a less intense non-conforming use, that's what we're trying to do here, is to redevelop the property as an office building with two apartments above it. And it, while it needs a number of variances, those, those variances exist now, or, form of those variances exists now on, on the property as it stands as a restaurant, it is a legally pre-existing restaurant. So what we're really looking to do is, is simply rebuild the building as an office building. It's got a very residential look to it. As you know, that section of Montauk Highway is essentially all, all corridored off now with fences, except for Landscape Details, which is across the street, and hopefully, this building, which we think would be a really nice improvement for the neighborhood, as well as the town, the village as a whole.
Walk through, present the project visually?
Visually?
And, and, and point out the items that were cited first.
Yeah, I don't, I think this is, is there, is there more than one rendering?
Yeah, yeah. This is, this is a long Montauk Highway, this obviously-
Mr. Derrick, can I just swear you?
Hi, I'm Michael Derrick, Landscape Details.
Please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record. I'm sorry. Please state your, please raise your right hand and state your name and address for the record.
Michael Derrick, Landscape Details. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you that well, I apologize.
Just your name and address for the record.
Oh, Michael Derrick, Landscape Details, 103 Montauk Highway, East Hampton, New York.
Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So anyway, this, this represents the front of the building, the facade that's parallel to Montauk Highway. This, obviously, in the rendering, looks a little more like a, you know, very, not a busy road, right? But then, this is a shot when you're coming east, this is what the building's gonna look like here, front entry view. Right here, and then, the second one, the next rendering is a perspective view of the west side of the building, when you pull into the parking lot. This is a little bit further in, deep into the parking lot on the west side, that shows the handicap, and then this back here is the door to the apartments upstairs. This might be a little more helpful. That's an overview. Top view.
Can you go back to that one, Michael?
Yeah, sure.
So, in, in redesigning the property, one of the goals was to try to put development away from the, the neighborhood to the west. So that's why the building was put over here and parking was put over there.
Well, I, I think one of the other things that, you know, to mention to, to John was, you know, when I bought the property, you know, everyone's like, oh, you're gonna keep it a restaurant, you're gonna turn it into a restaurant. It was a 66-seat restaurant with 13 parking spots, which is an impossibility, so everybody would be on the highway or whatever, so it really didn't make sense. And then, you know, upon further investigation, the building is dilapidated. Now, it's been literally like a shanty in the back, with no proper electric or foundation or anything, so when you really started to get into it, the only thing you could do is really take it down. It was in such bad, just repairs. And then this is the site plan that I-
You want to walk through, just, John, quickly, just point out the variances being sought? And the rationale for each of them, quickly, doesn't have to be-
I think I might have here-
People have a further question.
So, there's, there's essentially two residential properties that boarded this property. One is shaped like an L, and it goes like this, and the other one is over here. The one that's shaped like an L is-
Your software license has expired. To avoid periodic audio interruptions, please renew your license.
So the, the L-shaped property is the one that historically was in common ownership, and still is. So, again, that was a lot of the idea, was to try to keep the development away from the, the one non-related residential property. And so the variances, I have to pull them up, to be honest. Could be in the turn-down letter. Well, one, one of them is a rear yard variance, just for the, what is it, cellar entrance, or that staircase to the parking variance for two cars, which is to allow for the affordable apartment above it. Yeah, do you have that?
Since he did you the favor of setting the table for you before, why don't you set the table for him, on this end?
You want us to, you want us to hold the, you want us to hold the site plan for you?
Good morning, Billy Hayjack for the village. So, the, the board, the zoning board, as John indicated, can issue a special permit to change a non-conforming use to a use that you find to be more conforming. This is sort of a textbook case of you have a, a pre-existing non-conforming restaurant can operate at unusual hours, late in, late into the evening. It's being converted to an office use, which historically have, you know, generally nine to five, you know, business hours. This is very similar to the, or a mimic of the project that was directly across the street, which is Michael's current building, that was a restaurant converted to an office use. So it's more benign for the neighborhood, it's generally perceived to be a good, a good change. The variances that are required, the building essentially needs variances from all four prop, from all three property lines that it surrounds. The front yard variance is, the building, generally, it's staying in the same footprint as what exists, with some slight tweaking. It encroaches into the street slightly, from what exists, by about two feet. However, they're removing the concrete pad that's, exists within the front yard area, so that concrete pad goes away, but the building encroaches about two feet closer to the road. It needs a variance from the easterly side yard and from the northerly rear yard. But again, the building is roughly in the same footprint as what currently exists. The parking variance is for two parking spaces. The number of spaces required is 14, the plan provides for 12 parking spaces. The uniqueness here is that the apartments that are proposed, two apartments, are one-bedroom apartments, but each apartment requires two parking spaces. So the justification is that generally, you're gonna have, you know, one vehicle for a one-bedroom apartment. So, and the board has the ability to waive the fees and lieu of parking for a regulated income apartment, and the fact that this project will require sewage flow density credit from the town, we're gonna transfer density here to obtain the density needed for the apartments, they will be regulated income, so there'll be a covenant on the property, and they'll remain workforce housing for regulated income, which is a benefit that is not achieved by the restaurant existing. And then, I think that's, I mean, stormwater controls, there are none right now.
GFA?
The gross, the, the size of the retail, I'm sorry, the size of the office space is 1,900 square feet, and the two apartments, I think, combined total about 1,700 square feet. So, I mean, if you add it up, that's, you know, that's what the, the size of the building is. But it's not limited to gross floor area, because it's not a house, not a single-family residence, so the gross floor area provisions don't apply. But it's 1,900 square feet of, of office space, and that's about roughly what the, you know, the, the restaurant is right now. And as Michael said, it's over 60 seats, so.
Height, is there a height?
There is a height, so the maximum building height for a residence on this lot would be 30 feet. The design is for a 32-foot-tall building, so it does require a two-foot height variance. You know, I'm not capable of addressing that part of it, but maybe that's something Michael could address, as to whether or not it would affect the design of the building, you know, by trying to squash it down. I mean, it's a very attractive building, you wouldn't want to sacrifice the architecture if it's just the ridge part of it that's exceeding the, the height.
Can you just point out-
Egress issues, specifically combining residential with parking?
No, it's, I mean, it's a single egress, you know, it's just like, as any other, yeah, any other apartment, yeah. Yeah, they have an ADA parking space, it'll be ADA accessible, the office space, the apartments will have, you know, proper egress. The building will be sprink, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be sprinklered, it has to be sprinklered.
Yeah. Can you just point out the height variance?
Do you have any other questions for me?
We can explain the height.
Okay, thank you, Billy.
Yep.
Don't say thank you to Billy, but-
So-
So, just announce yourself again for the record, just because we're being-
Sure, John Tarbit, back, back again. So, if you look at the, I don't think we have the rendering of it, or, or large size of, but on the plans, you'll see that the, the apartments upstairs already have very sloped roofs, so the idea is to give the people living in the apartments a little bit of headroom, and also, as a, as a commercial building, you'll be familiar with most commercial buildings- And also, as a, as a commercial building, you'll be familiar with most commercial buildings, the goal is to maximize cubic space inside. So all, a lot of commercial buildings are flat roofs, square buildings. That would be the easiest answer here. Uh, however, it would've had more bulk. So, uh, as a, and I'm probably stepping on your toes here as far as design goes, but I believe the idea was to design a house and not a commercial building, have it look like a house and be more fitting for the character of the neighborhood. Uh, because of that, you have these pitched roofs.
Dormers.
Let me ask the question directly. So it's the, the two-foot variance is for that peak portion in the middle right there, so it's not, it's not a.
What happens is when you get over in here upstairs, when you, when you get over here on the ends, this becomes really small, you know? And then like this dormer would come down and slightly small closets that are against the wall are, you know, have short doors on them. So in order to keep it to look like, you know, as, you know, uh, shingle styled East Hampton kinda home, that's what you got. So we needed to raise that.
And with the commercial space on the ground floor, I just want to be clear for the record what the rationale is for the height variance being sought. Because as you know, anytime we do something, people then come in and say it's a precedent and you granted all.
We just had the conversation.
So in this point, I just make sure I, I at least understand this. The reason for the, for two-foot variance is to accommodate the peaks or wider angle for the apartments upstairs that accommodate the pre-existing non-conforming commercial use in the, uh, in the base, which has a ceiling height that's different, which is why if this were just a purely residential building without the commercial space, it wouldn't need, or wouldn't, it would be a different case in terms of what was being requested in terms of the height variance.
I also think the board may have viewed it differently if we came with a box and said, hey, we want two feet, right? Uh, that probably would've been seen as just a grab, but there's a very clear design.
I just, yeah, I was trying to add. We decide, we'll speculate what the board would do. I just want to be clear that the grounds for, the rationale for the two-foot height variance is because you have a commercial base, office base, and with residential units on top with the peak roof, and so you're asking for the two-foot variance to accommodate the peak roof on the residential portions up to make those.
What's the ceiling height on the ground floor?
Nine feet.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you.
Can I just note for the record that the applicant has presented, so, or used some depictions, photographs, demonstrables? Do you have copies of those for the record?
They were submitted as PDF, so they're, they are in the record, they're just small.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question, um, related to the parking spaces? What, what could be done so that we don't have to spill over to the neighbors' yards again if there's not enough parking for the office space and for the, for the apartments?
So there are two residential properties aboard this. Uh, it was the one that was in common ownership and is still in common ownership that was the problem. They, they were purposely allowing the sixty-six, obviously, as, as Michael said, a sixty-six seat restaurant with thirteen parking spaces or whatever it was, was never gonna work. Um, so, what, you have a fence back there, right?
Yeah.
So there's a, the, the site plan or the, or the proposed plan includes a fence around the back of the parking lot, so, and there hasn't been any, there hasn't been any spill over, uh, since the previous owner was cited for it. I guess if they, if they were, that's, I guess that's the answer, is the code enforcement could cite, um, the owner for allowing spill over onto the residential property. But there is a fence, but there is a fence.
Yeah, I just don't see, you know, with the size of the first floor for the office, I don't, there's plenty of parking spots for people that are gonna be worried. The office is, it's a pretty small office, so.
Funny, actually, next door, uh, we actually got, we, we actually asked for a larger variance. That, that, the building you're in now was, remember they wanted us to like pave that hole? There's a big giant green area behind the building across the street because of the parking calculations, uh, so we actually provided a covenant.
Right.
Yeah, we put a covenant over. So we, we wanted to keep that all green because our, we said we had enough parking, and it turns out you did have enough parking and it stayed green.
Yeah, for seven, for, um, seven years that I've been there, you know, across the street at 103, but in board, because it was fifty-eight hundred or so many hundred square feet, that the whole thing had to be a parking lot in the back. So it was determined that we would put in, we'd show a plan that cited how we would correct it if we started spilling out on the street, and they could come and enforce us to tear out the garden and put in these parking things that said, uh.
Covenant.
Covenant. I mean, here, we don't have any room, so couldn't put a covenant in because we don't have garden.
I guess the issue, the answer would be that there's a fence, but if, if, if an owner was to, uh, exceed the allowable parking and spill over to the neighbor's property, it would be, it would be a code enforcement.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Thank you. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second. You have to disclose. Thank you. Next item? Next item is fifty-six James Lane.
Application of Linda A. and Richard E. Willett, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-8-9-4, for wetlands permit in accordance with Chapter 163 and area variances from Chapter 278 zoning to legalize patios and to construct a pergola. Wetlands permit is required in accordance with Section 163.3, and variances of twenty-six feet and twenty-three point three feet are requested from Section 278.3A8 to legalize a patio located one hundred and twenty-four feet from wetlands and to construct a pergola located one hundred and twenty-six point seven feet from wetlands where the wet, the required wetland setback, setbacks are one hundred and fifty feet. Variances of four point one feet and two point two feet are requested from Section 278.3A5B to legalize a patio located fifteen point nine feet and seventeen point eight feet from the rear yard lot, property lines, where the required rear yard setbacks are twenty feet. The subject property is fifty-seven thousand fifteen square feet in area and is located at fifty-six James Lane in Residence District R160 and the Main Street Historic District. This project is classified as a Type II action in accordance with SECR and requires review by the Village Design Review Board. I'm just gonna state for the record who's sitting on this application, as well as one hundred Montauk Highway, Mr. Rose, Mr. Barris, Ms. Fitzsimons, Mr. Carmelli, and Mr. Darko.
Good morning, members of the board. Trevor Darrell, Fleming and Darrell, PLLC, on behalf of the applicant. As Gabby just read, we are before you today seeking relief for three items on the subject property. Uh, this came about, my client went to apply for and had designs built for a pergola and went to seek permits to have a pergola constructed on her property. And in doing so, it was brought to her attention that not only did she need the building permit for the proposed pergola, but there were two existing, uh, patios that, uh, needed permission as well. So we are before you, uh, begging forgiveness on two and seeking permission on one. And I know, um, I agree with Mr. Rose's position. Often, I don't come before this board begging forgiveness on, um, pre-built structures. But in this scenario, um, Mrs. Willett, um, her husband has pre-deceased, and when she went to get the pergola is when it was brought to her attention that, um, over the years of ownership, her husband was the person who maintained the parcels for the most part and, um, had these patios installed. And, um, so while they are there, um, we don't believe that they are impacting the character of the neighborhood and/or the wetlands as the board is, I'm sure, who, those who went. The wetlands that are called that on this property is Town Pond, which is across James Lane. So not only do we have the roadway between us, but the sidewalks as well as, you know, the green areas and grass, and we have lawn between us and the pond as well. Um, so any potential impacts to the wetlands, I think, is nonexistent. Um, and the existing patios, we, I did submit to the board, I didn't.
Your software license has expired. To avoid periodic audio interruptions, please renew your license.
I did submit to the board, uh, two letters of, um, support on the neighbors who are most directly impacted by the two patios. Um, one is the, um, the gardeners and the other, uh, is the Brodys who are, you know, the most impacted. The other neighbors would be across the, the actual Jeffries, uh, lane, which is sort of the, the private roadway that, that runs up the, the street, so. Any questions? I'd be happy to. Oh, and I would say that, um, as Gabby pointed out, we do need DRB approval as well. Um, so we will, we're waiting for that hearing to happen. So they may have further comment, but, um, I wanted to have this board's thoughts as prior to that.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Anyone from the public? Hearing none. Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Hearing is closed. Welcome back, our distinguished chair.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Rose. Go on now for the, the next hearing, please. And please state who's sitting on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So for twenty-seven Hunting Lane, we have Mr. McGurk, Mr. Barris, Ms. Fitzsimons, Mr. Carmelli, and Mr. Darko sitting on the application. And then I'm just going to read the public hearing notice. Application of Stanley De Jong Osborne and Virginia Osborne, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-3-8-4, for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning to construct a detached garage and cellar entry within required setbacks. Variances of six point two feet and nine feet are requested from Section 278.3A5B to construct a detached garage eight point eight feet from a side yard lot line and to construct a cellar entry six feet from a rear yard lot line where the required side and rear yard, rear yard setbacks are fifteen feet. The subject property is twenty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-nine square feet in area and is located at twenty-seven Hunting Lane in Residence District R40 and the Hunting Lane Historic District. This project is classified as a Type II action in accordance with SECR and requires review by the Village Design Review Board.
Good morning. John Tarbitt for the applicant, Virginia Osborne. So this is a garage variance request. It was, uh, is to replace an existing garage, which is only twenty-something years old, but it isn't, it is in somewhat rough shape. Um, and it, it's a new owner. So this, this, because it's a garage, and the garage is there now, was, was built about twenty years ago after getting a variance from this board. And at that time, the Village had a historic preservation consultant, Bob Hefner, and also went to DRB at that time. And Mr. Hefner's argument, which would hopefully apply now too, is that, I think he said, um, twelve of the sixteen properties in the Hunting Lane Historic District have, have garages tucked into rear corners of the property. So, um, the existing garage that was, that's there now was built, um, sort of at the, um, suggestion that that was the appropriate spot. There actually wasn't a conforming location on the property for a garage, but it was the DRB and Bob Hefner's position at that time that, uh, it's more in keeping with the character of this particular neighborhood to tuck garages in the back corner. So the new owner, um, has slightly different needs than the old owner. They have two historic cars that they'd like to keep in the garage, uh, and to re, and so they redesigned a new garage, which is essentially the same location, uh, but it's more of a rectangle than a square. And I just gave the board some, uh, some rough numbers. So the existing garage is twenty feet high, the proposed garage is, I'm rounding off here, so the existing garage is twenty feet high, the proposed garage is sixteen feet high, the existing garage is ten feet from the side yard, the proposed garage is eight point eight feet, uh, and then from the rear yard, the, the existing, um, garage is actually pushed up pretty close to that rear yard neighbor, it's five feet. Uh, the new one will be pulled, uh, twelve feet further off the rear yard to allow for a cellar entrance. The whole point of the cellar entrance is to be able to put the pool equipment in the basement and not above ground. Uh, so, uh, that's a, that's a pretty good benefit for both this property and the neighbors. We did get letters of support from the two adjacent neighbors, um, both of whom enthusiastically support, uh, the new garage. I think it's essentially the, uh, and, you know, there's, there's renderings and pictures of the new garage, which does, is still subject to DRB approval, um, in the file for the Village, for you, for the board to look at. But it is essentially, um, a similar application to twenty years ago.
Well, I, I believe we just heard this application.
Six months ago?
A different.
Billy, can you? Yeah, it's a different application, but it's, I don't think it's much different. Um, I did sit on the application in two thousand and two. I know I don't look that old, but, um, and it, we, we wanted to put the garages in the corners because it is, it's not just a characteristic of the historic districts, it's characteristic of the village. If you look at most old properties, they are stuck in the corner. So, uh, I'm in favor of keeping it in the corner, so. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could talk through the determination from last year.
Yeah.
Because I'm not so sure that, you know, our conclusions are very different with this application, but maybe we could go through those.
It's in the packet that was presented by the Village. Page four, six.
You want to lead us up?
Sure. So, um, in page four of the twenty-twenty-four determination, um, you know, just taking through the five, um, criteria, uh, the requested variance, the variances are inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. The location of the presently existing garage is the product of prior variance consideration and relief from this board, and as such, is in keeping with historic development pattern and preferences for the historic district. The proposal seeks a departure from this prior fully considered placement and neighborhood pattern. So I think that same, you know, the same logic would apply on this application too.
So would you prefer that we just slide it back towards the back property line? Because we, that's easy to do. I, if that's, if that's, if the objection is that it went from, uh, what, it'd go from five feet to twelve feet off the rear property line, we could slide it back and have it, the idea was to give, um, a little relief that rear yard neighbor, but, um, it's very doable to slide it back. You want to go through the? It's a smaller variance request.
Yeah, I think the objection is keep them in the corner. I mean, if they, if they remain a garage, they're usually quiet. It's, 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 you know, it's when they morph into something else, that's when the noise, the noise factor happens. Is that it? Access from the back. It's like it's access to the.
Yeah.
Did it give you access for you?
It, it makes it a little easier to get behind it, to get into the, um, the basement, which is to house the pool equipment, but it could be redesigned to, uh, to, and maybe, maybe the board should hear from the DRB first then? I don't know what the proper, where they want it. If the, if the issue is just placement on the property, then.
Billy, can you? That'd be a.
I don't know, because I don't know what the DRB would say.
We'll have to wait to see what the DRB, we have to go for DRB approval because there's a need to our question.
Uh, good morning or afternoon now, uh, Billy Hjajak for the Village. Uh, I, I don't know what the DRB would say either. I mean, I, I'm not a DRB member, but they, the board, the DRB would not be able to act on the application until the relief is granted by the zoning board. So historically, we've been bringing applications to the zoning board first so that the design review board could act on it when it's presented to them. Um, I would just note that the existing garage is designed to mimic more of a carriage house type structure. You know, it was designed to be quasi-historic looking. While this is not a, um, you know, historic building, uh, it was designed to, to sort of look historic. Um, you know, it is a contributing property in the, um, Hunting Lane Historic District, but the house itself was built in two thousand and two, and that's, as we indicated, that's when the garage was built. But it was designed to be more of a carriage house type structure. Um, you know, if I'm, I'm listening to the board, it might be, part of it could be also the size of the structure. The existing garage is four hundred and twenty-five square feet. What's proposed is a six hundred square foot garage. You know, it might be the size that's a, a concern, and it's like linear length or, you know, it's kind of more bowling alley-ish. Um, you'd have to stack two cars in there. It's not a conventional or traditional garage. But I think that's just the constraints of this property. So, you know, it's a, there's a large house on the property already. Um, they're at their very maximum amount of coverage. In order to construct the additional square footage for the garage, they're taking up patios and converting them into gravel. So, it's their.
Yeah, I see, I did see that. I did see that in your, your memo here. It's noted that survey depicts a removal of existing landscape patios and the conversion of an existing brick patio into a screen porch. All other outdoor spaces are either gravel or lawn with no fixed patios. That's in your.
And I did note in the, in the, one of the conditions of the two thousand and two determination was that the garage not contain any plumbing. Um, and this plan proposes a slop sink, so it'll be connected to sewage and water, water services.
in the back corner where it is now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does it make sense to ask for comments from the DRB first, Billy, or no?
Just to avoid getting into a situation where.
I think we want to see it in the corner. I think it's.
Maybe this board can give comments to the DRB. I don't know.
We'll have to talk to our legal team. We can't do that, so. Just said no, so.
So, just so I accurately relay to the client, the board's concern is that it's moving further from the rear yard. You'd like to have it tucked back in the corner without putting a word in your mouth?
Yes, I think when we granted this in 2002, I think because we gave the house was bigger than what was there, I think the idea was to keep that, and also historically, when the village, keep those garages tucked in the corner.
That's fine. Okay.
Okay.
So we'll.
We'll adjourn us to the next one.
Requesting a German.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Gabby?
Application of 68 Woods Lane LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-8-7-44, for an area variance from Chapter 278 zoning to construct, in addition to an existing residence. A 30.7-foot variance is requested from Section 278.3A4A to construct a one-story addition located 19.3 feet from a side yard lot line where the required side yard setback is 50 feet. The subject property contains 87,606 square feet of lot area and is located at 68 Woods Lane. The property is in Residence Districts R80 and R40, and this project is classified as a Type 2 action in accordance with SECR. I'm just going to state for the record who's sitting on the application. Mr. McGurk, Mr. Barris, Ms. Fitzsimons, Mr. Carmelli, and Mr. Darko.
Mary Jane?
Good afternoon. Mary Jane Nusato, Burke, Lenning, Nusato, 21 South Main Street for the applicant. I also have with me Christian Luks, who's the project engineer, I mean, project architect. This house has been here a long time, 1902 architecture. It is listed on the National and State Registry. It is a pre-existing non-conforming three-story house, and there is another cottage in the back, so the entire property is essentially non-conforming because obviously it has more than one dwelling. This house is currently going under a complete renovation. I believe that they are, not only the exterior characteristics, but the spatial historic character of the interior spaces in relation to the classic shingle style are being maintained. And it's a benefit in the sense of historic houses, I mean, certainly when they're loved and maintained and kept up, hopefully this house upon completion will be here for another 100 years plus. So the variance that we're requesting for you is a 40.7 feet variance from the side yard. It seems at first blush, wow, that's a lot. However, basically, there's an existing side yard on the property. It goes no closer it is to maintain that line. There's a small proposed addition under the existing second story overhang. That variance, actually on the second, that's overhang, was created by a variance that was granted many years ago to my father-in-law.
Your software license has expired. To avoid periodic audio interruptions, please renew your license.
My mother-in-law, Robert Osborne, was here before the board and was granted a variance to actually put on that small second-floor addition. And what we're proposing to do is basically keep that line and fill in this area. It's certainly, the degree of nonconformity as far as the side yard is not changing. Yes, however, there's a small mass increase here. I believe that this request meets all five prongs of the test for variances in the sense of, will this create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? We submit to you, no. Basically, this area is not visible from the street. It has no impact on the neighborhood because it's two adjoining driveways, and it keeps to the vernacular of the house and historic style and spacing. Is there any other means for which we can achieve this request? I went through a rather long back and forth with the architect, Christian. I said, well, why can't you just put a smaller bump out here? Why can't you just add something here? I gave all kinds of variations because I said I'm going to have to before, go to the board and tell them that we can't do this feasibly and practically without this variance. And basically, Christian said, Mary Jane, I'm trying to maintain the historic spacing of this house, and putting little additions that have no balance is not going to keep that integrity of the house. We can't just put something interior as well either because we're keeping the spatial balance inside the house. If you have questions as to that, Christian certainly could answer them better than I can, but I, we went through, or I certainly went through the back and forth with her to try to get a conforming location and not have to put this request into you. As I said, at first blush, it may seem substantial, but frankly, considering the pre-existing location of the house, the two abutting driveways, there is very little impact at all with, should this board decide to grant the variance. Will this variance, if granted, have an adverse impact on health, safety, and welfare or the character of the neighborhood? We submit to you, no. This is a three-story building. The reason for this variance is to accommodate an RPZ closet because it's going to be a sprinkled house now. Considering its volunteer fire out here and the density in the village, I think that that's actually a benefit so that in the event that there is some sort of event that happens, the house is fully sprinkled. I think that it's a safety, not for the inhabitants only, but also the neighborhood, that if there should be any sort of fire event, at least there's a first line of protection with a sprinkler system. Was this difficulty self-created? No, this is a pre-existing house for over 100 years, and it is in its existing situation. Moving it to, you know, toward the interior of the property actually impacts the historic nature of this house in the sense that I believe the sighting and the relationship with the carriage house, as well as the street, is all in keeping with what makes it historic. If this board has other questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them, and certainly if architectural style, Christian will be happy to answer them. But when you do the balancing test, the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the neighborhood, the community, health, safety, and welfare, we submit to you respectfully that it really comes out on the variance being granted versus a denial.
Thank you, and thank you for going through the area variance criteria. Board members, any questions? Anybody in the audience have any questions? I think a motion to close the hearing. Second, please. All in favor? Thank you, Mary Jane.
And we'll move on to the next hearing, please.
Application of House on the Pond LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 301-13-10-15, for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning and a wetlands permit in accordance with Chapter 163 wetlands to legalize accessory improvements and grading activities. A wetlands permit is requested pursuant to Section 163.5, and variances of 1.9 feet, 12.5 feet, 16.2 feet, and 16.5 feet are requested from Section 278.3A8 to legalize a swimming pool located 148.1 feet from wetlands, a retaining wall located 137.3 feet from wetlands, pool fencing located 133.6 feet from wetlands, and a subsurface drainage structure located 133.5 feet from wetlands where the required wetland setbacks are 150 feet. Wetlands permit is requested pursuant to Section 163.5 to legalize the placement of fill and land grading within 150 feet of wetlands and for landscaping within 125 feet of wetlands. The subject property is 43,816 square feet in area and is located at 10 Lockwood Lane and is in Residence District R160 and FEMA flood zones AEE 111. The property fronts on Hook Pond, and this project is located as a Type 2 action in accordance with SECR.
Thank you, Shannon. You want?
Just to state on the record who's sitting on this application. Mr. McGurk, Mr. Barris, Ms. Fitzsimons, Mr. Carmelli, and Mr. Darko.
Shannon.
Good morning.
Just, we just received your material yesterday, so we'd like to review it, keep the hearing open, and then you can present next hearing. Is that doable?
Do we want to discuss any issues or just?
I think we'd like to read the material you submitted and then review it. Is that, board members, any comments?
Sounds fair. There's a lot of material.
Yeah. So we will adjourn this meeting till next month, okay?
Thank you very much.
So a motion to close the meeting. Second? All in favor? Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.